That's our gavel. Good morning, everybody, and welcome to the NAGS Head Planning Board meeting, Tuesday, May 20th. Mr. Elder will not be able to be with us today, and of course, everybody got Kristi Midget's email, and so we appreciate her many years of loyal service, and we'll miss her. And the BOC, I'm sure, will get to work replacing her in the next few months. So, moving on to our first order of business, which is to approve our agenda for the day. I have a motion to approve, and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I don't see anyone in the audience that wants to speak to us today. So, we'll move past public comment and on to approval of our minutes from the April 15th meeting.
So, move.
I have a motion to approve the minutes as submitted.
Second.
And a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Great. Moving on, then, to our action item.
Madam Chair, I do have one comment about the minutes.
Okay.
Macy White was referenced as working for Village Realty, and she works for Seaside Realty Management.
Oh, gotcha.
That was the only question.
Understood. Great. That's perfect. Yeah, because they do all the associations now, right?
All the...
In the Village?
Yes.
Okay. Great. Thank you, Mead.
You're welcome.
Going over them. And Lily, thank you for making that change at your convenience. Okay, now, we'll move on to action item, consideration of the site plan amendment by the town of Nagshead for the redevelopment of the existing employee wellness facility.
Okay.
Good morning, Kelly.
Good morning. Thank you, everyone. I'll go through this pretty quickly. I think after dealing with the rezoning request and the text amendment, you're pretty familiar with what's happening. But Town Engineer David Ryan has done a site plan, actually, the whole packet you received with the demo plan, site plan, et cetera, but I'll go ahead and put the site plan on the screen so we can have that while I go through this. Obviously, the town is the applicant on this, and it's going to be a site plan amendment for construction of a two-story, 3,200 square foot employee wellness facility with two residential workforce housing units above, and all the site improvements that go along with it. Consideration of the request is contingent upon the approval of the rezoning from R3 to SPDC Institutional, as we've discussed in the past. What's most notable in this scenario is that all of our properties to the south are zoned R3 as well. So, you'll notice in your packet, there's a requirement for a 10-foot-wide transitional protective yard in this area, which you'll see on this plan here that has been shown. There's an existing block building on slab here, which is going to prevent the continuation of that 10-foot-wide landscape buffer, but I have a feeling the people behind there would probably rather have that block building adjacent to the block. Moving along, as far as flood zone, the property is in an X flood zone, but we do have a local elevation standard of nine. So, as you can see on this plan, the fitness facility and housing will be elevated to 10 feet. Therefore, it's above that nine-foot RFP, so it's compliant. The 2017 comp plan and the future land use plan classify the property as institutional community service. So, obviously, this is going to be consistent with that. Section 9.36, which is where we have our table of uses and activities, that identifies municipal building, fire station, police station, admin office, and as you recall, most recently, the county EMS station, as permitted use within the Village Institutional District. So, again, as long as that rezoning is approved, this should not be problematic at all. And beyond that, it is just redevelopment of an existing facility. Lot coverage here, the UDO establishes maximum impervious for Village Institutional at 70 percent with a minimum landscaped area of 30 percent. Existing lot coverage on the site, which we're talking about the entire site, not only the south side, but the north side as well, is 44.12 percent, and actually, with this redevelopment and the use of turf stone parking, lot coverage goes down just a slight bit, down to 44 percent. So, it would be compliant either way, but it's great that we actually reduced coverage a little bit. For height, you can go to 35 feet, you can go to 42 with an 812 roof pitch. This building has a 1012 pitch, and it's coming in at about 34 feet, so it's obviously compliant with that. Architectural design standards, we went with the residential design for this. So, for commercial buildings, you have to have 150 residential architectural design points for compliance, and this building, as proposed, has at least 155, if not more. And that's achieved through primarily the first floor porch. There's also a small second floor porch as well, but I think I only included the first floor in my calculations. Dormers, 812 roof pitch, wood shingles, as well as some simulated siding shingles as well, and then other architectural details such as residential style windows and rafter tails and column trim. With regard to parking, there isn't a parking standard for fitness facility as an accessory use, which this is, but we applied indoor gymnasium fitness facility as a principal use. And for that, there was going to be 11 spaces required. Understanding that this will be workforce housing and potentially even lifeguard housing as well, we wanted to make sure that it was parked at one parking space per bedroom. So, there's going to be eight bedrooms in these units above. So, we wanted to make sure that we had eight parking spaces. So, that's going to require 19 parking spaces. So, we don't have 19 spaces right here, you can see that, but we did an analysis of the entire Town Hall facility. And the entire Town Hall facility requires 76 spaces, but what we have is 86. So, there's going to be adequate, I guess if we ever get maxed out, there might be some lifeguards having to park just over the way a little bit. But there's adequate parking for the whole site in general. We talked about buffering and landscaping, that 10-foot-wide transitional protective yard along the rear, that's shown and that's compliant. We'll just need to see a more detailed landscape plan with what type of plantings we're going to make up those two rows. Interior parking lot landscaping, we require 10 percent of the total area of the parking spaces. So, we need about 320 square feet of vegetation, and there's a lot more than that. So, you can see, I don't know if you can see my cursor, but through here, these are just little pockets of landscape areas right around the building, but then we also have these large landscape beds that have been proposed, as well as keeping all the existing natural vegetation around that we possibly can. Which moves on to the next criteria, it states that you can preserve 10 percent or plant 15 percent of the landscaping. All total, based upon the very narrow scope of the project, 95 percent of the existing mature vegetation in this area will be retained. So, it's compliant with that regard as well. No lighting is being proposed at this time. If and when it's proposed, they'll have to submit a lighting plan, photometrics, fixture, all of that. Go through that approval and have a light audit. No signage is being requested at this time. As far as wastewater, so that's in process. That's over with Dare County Health Department being reviewed now. We anticipate having that soon, if not prior to the BOC, because this is, it's not a conditional use. We don't have that extra month. If we don't have that before BOC, we'll certainly make that a requirement before we issue any type of building permits or zoning permits. Obviously, it won't move forward without that. Traffic circulation, that was obviously designed by our town engineer, so it's clearly compliant with all of your rules. Stormwater management, there's a provision in our stormwater management board, and that you're probably familiar with, because it's come up several times, which basically states that if you don't have a net increase in lot coverage and you're not importing any fill, that you don't have to manage any stormwater. So, that's going to be the case in this scenario. We're actually reducing lot coverage, and there's no fill being brought in, and if there is, it's simply as part of the foundation. It will be contained as such and not on the site. That about wraps it up. So, we have fire. Obviously, it has to comply with NC Fire Prevention Codes, and Public Services has looked at this, reviewed and approved it. And that's all we have at this time. I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have. And of course, David Ryan is here. If you have any questions for him. Out of curiosity, I will scroll down just so you can see the elevations. It's going to be an attractive building.
Yeah, it really looks nice.
Yeah, it does.
It looks good.
It looks great.
There we go. So, you can see, we have this large porch here, we have column trim, and we have several dormers. There's a shed dormer on the opposite side. We've got cedar shake siding, as well as boredom batting down here. Residential style windows, it kind of hits all the criteria that we like to see for residential.
Yeah, good to put our best foot forward, right?
Right.
What are the hours of the fitness facility?
That I do not know.
I'm just curious, really.
Andy would have to answer. You know what? I don't know if this is the right answer or not, but it's on a code. I don't, if you're in a...
Maybe it's 20, basically, yeah.
Because I know we have people there late at night and early in the morning as it fits their work schedules. Sorry.
No, the hours of the fitness facility I was asking?
Are the hours?
Yeah, is it just by...
Well, we use a badge system, and so there's...
Anytime.
There are hours.
Right. That's great.
Do employees like us get to use this facility?
Planning board members do get to use the facility.
But we don't have badges.
Come to Town Hall, get your badge.
Done.
You've got to wait for them to fix it, to build it.
We have a policy.
To build it first.
Well, there is one, but...
Yeah.
We have a policy on the use of the fitness facility.
Yes.
It talks about employees, retirees, family members of employees, work members. I believe planning board members are also included, all in policy.
Great. Thank you. Who might we come to see for a badge?
You can come to see Jan, our HR Director, or Karen Snyder, our active person.
Okay, so any questions about the site plan before us? For Kelly, or for Mr. Ryan's here? I think it looks great.
I do, too.
I love that it incorporates lifeguard.
So, the housing, I know you said it might be lifeguards, but it might not, it might...
Well, it's going to be workforce either way.
Town staff.
Town folks versus...
Yeah.
It's my understanding, anything outside of that would obviously have to be approved through the town manager.
Right, right.
But at this point, yeah, Town of Nagshead workforce.
That's great.
Yeah, I think it's great.
That's a great, I like that.
I don't know of anybody else who's doing it either. I don't know of anybody else who's trying to help with the housing problem, so...
Yeah, I like the, like, looking for little pockets where you can, like, squeeze some things in.
Right, yeah.
Yeah.
This makes good sense. Okay, so no questions on the design? No more questions for Kelly? Right? Does somebody want to make a motion, or do we, we have to make a decision on this thing and move it forward?
Anybody wants to tour up the one we're building up at the community storefront?
Oh, yeah.
We have to get you up there. It's been framed, and now they're doing the trailer, and getting ready to start installing that soon. It's going to be nice.
What's the projected date of finishing that one?
In sometime, well, the contract is August deadline, so we're predicting sometime July.
Okay.
Oh, okay.
Great.
Yeah, that one is a eight-bedroom facility. This one's eight bedrooms, so we'll have 16 bedrooms that we added to our community toward, or 12 people have to house.
Fabulous.
Yeah.
It's great.
Motion?
Yeah.
And we continue to have people that will want to take the job, but then they'll not take the job. They can't find housing. It's a supply issue. And so, we don't think we would need to house all of our staff. You know, in total, they have, they hire about 50, most of the rest of these staff. Some of those folks are part-time, though, and some live here, some don't need housing. But I think this will take care of the majority of the population.
Great.
Are these units furnished, just out of curiosity?
They will be.
Nice.
Perfect.
I think the town is leading by example here, and it really does set a good precedent, big time. And I would make a motion to approve the site plan as presented.
Great. We have a motion. Did I hear a second? Any further discussion? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Anybody opposed? Great, moving on, thank you, to nomination of a planning board member to serve on the Septic Health Advisory Committee.
I'll volunteer. I was on the, what do you call it? The decentralized wastewater management project a couple of years ago.
Great.
And I've kind of got a little bit of background in that world, so if y'all will be okay with that, I'd volunteer.
Okay.
Yeah.
Anybody else interested, or, you know, okay. Great, thank you so much, Basil. That was easy.
Yeah.
So, everyone is in agreement? We'll go ahead and nominate Basil? Do we need a motion, I guess?
I'll make a motion to nominate Basil.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Great. Thank you very much, Basil. We appreciate it. And now, we'll move on.
Before we leave there, who's going to, who's in charge and who's going to tell me what's going on with that?
Good question.
Hold on.
How, you know, what to do?
Just the next meeting, for instance.
Yeah, so our next meeting is actually coming up pretty soon. I believe it's the 29th of May. So, yeah, and we'll bring you up to date on everything that's happening with that. So, the primary thing that the Septic Health Advisory Committee is working with now is, you know, we were granted the Division of Water Infrastructure grant, the $500,000 to distribute through a no-interest loan program. We have to create the scope of that. Right now, we're looking at prioritizing high-risk properties, and we've gone through the process to try to identify what those high risks are adjacent to a water body, hasn't had any maintenance on their septic system for a certain amount of time. Joe's doing an amazing job with his GIS analysis. Okay, so we've pulled all that information, and now we're presenting it to the Shack to see if they agree with how we've gone about developing the at-risk properties. And that's going to be the 28th.
Is that in the morning or afternoon?
It's at 10:00 a.m. in the conference room at Town Hall. And so, we have some notes. I'm happy to send you to catch them.
Yeah, please do.
Sure.
Great, thank you. Okay, so Kelly, are you going to report to us?
Yeah, I'm here.
On Board of Commissioners' actions from their May 7th meeting, please?
Quickly, yeah. We don't have a whole lot to go through. But, so for consent agenda, we had the map amendment that we just spoke about in terms of the southern portion of this property going from R3 to Village Institutional, as well as the text amendment that goes along with that. We gave an update on that loan that we were just talking about, the zero-interest loan. And then Deputy Director Joe Costello provided a presentation to the board on an opportunity that we have to collaborate with the county and through the Hazard Mitigation Grant Program to either elevate properties that are part of the repetitive loss list or go through a process to potentially, for acquisition. That's exciting. I think there's a couple of properties that we're currently exploring for both elevation and acquisition. I think that's it in terms of planning-related items.
Okay. Anybody questions?
I have one question.
Yeah.
I meant to follow up on this, and I never did, but it's the, the house on East Lakeside Street, it was applying for a variance of some sort.
Yes.
What was that about?
So, it was 109 East Lakeside, and they had put an above-ground pool on their property and built wooden access stairs and a little platform to get into the above-ground pool. And they had done that without any permits. So, when they got their notice of violation, they immediately came in to try to get the proper permits. And we realized that not only did they not have lot coverage for that, but they were already over their lot coverage.
Before the pool?
Yeah. Not by a lot, but they were. It was developed in the 1960s. And then when you go by there, it's an old house, carport, things like, everything on there looks pretty old. So, I don't know how much was actually done recently, if any of it. But as part of the submission for hardship, there's a question in there that relates to federal fair housing and ADA requirements. And the applicant, he and his wife, his wife has a condition. She had a note from her physician stating that water, routine water, access to routine water exercises helped alleviate her condition. And so, the board, based upon that, the Board of Adjustment granted the variance, but they placed several conditions. Well, one condition and several criteria. The pool's got to go when she no longer needs it. And the applicant stated that it would be likely no more than 10 years. So, that's one requirement. The pool has to go if they ever sell the property, and the pool has to go if it ever goes into any type of rental program, long or short. Right now, it's a second home only, and it's not rented out.
Okay, thanks. Sure.
Any other questions? Me, did you have something?
I did. I was interested in what would be a reason for an acquisition.
I'll hand that over to Joe.
Good morning. The acquisitions would be if, what's eligible under the grant is if it's a repetitive loss or if it's in a flood hazard area. Those are really what's qualifying. I think what we're looking at specifically is people, first of all, who are voluntarily interested in selling their homes or those that are east of the static line, potentially have, you know, some other issues like damage or previous condemnation.
Would, and, and somebody whose house is, is in a situation like that, where it's repeatedly damaged in storms, would that not be something that the insurance company would cover that expense?
To remove, to remove the property, is what you're saying?
Well, or you don't rebuild.
So, if it's substantially damaged and it sort of tips the threshold of, of that substantial damage, I think that's sort of one case. But I think in the event that it just had some flooding and they are insured, that the insurance company would, you know, pay out for that damage, assuming they have flood insurance and the dam, you know, whatever their criteria is. But the insurance company wouldn't acquire that property and demolish the property and then keep it in open space. And that's really, our role would be to kind of be a liaison. The state, through this acquisition, sort of administrative relationship with the state that is made available, they would be kind of managing the whole project. We just kind of hold the deed as it, in, into perpetuity and put a deed restriction on that parcel and keep it as open space, and that's really the extent of our role, except for some liaising. The state would be sort of managing the grant, doing the procurement, managing the actual demolition and removal of the home. So, it's pretty, it's unique to my understanding to North Carolina, so...
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah.
Anybody else? Okay, so then let's move on to our discussion item. Joe, you can stay up there, right? We can talk about Strategic Plan Action Item 2.2. And we're looking at the Chord District. Soon to be renamed something better, right?
That's right. Okay, so this Chord discussion, again, came out of the strategic plan to look at the Chord and look at the compatibility between what our zoning does and then what our comprehensive plan says. We had a discussion, first, we, you know, we drafted sort of this report on the existing conditions, sent that to you all in March, had a presentation on what the report contained. Last month, we had some discussion items, sort of questions, and then sort of loose discussion. Just as a reminder, this is sort of the area we're talking about, the outlined in blue area. It's an overlay district, so extra uses are allowed in this district, commercial outdoor uses specifically. But there's the underlying C2 zoning, so any use in C2 can be developed within this Chord district. So, you know, the, ultimately, that Chord report talked about... So, you know, the, ultimately that Chord Report talked about amending the UDO to reflect the Chord goals. Here's some uses right now that are allowed within the underlying C two, as well as a whole host of other things. And so the Chord Report recommended basically looking at these, all these uses and considering making sort of group developments or mixed-use developments allowed and allowing Chord uses as a part of, of making that allowed within the Chord and then removing some of these potentially non-compatible uses such as large residential dwelling, potentially automobile repair, car washes from the C two zone. And then the other sort of portion of that, as we looked at the plan was, in, in the comp plan, the goals that the Comprehensive Plan speaks about for this activity node was, was a lot about connecting it to the Whalebone Activity Area, which is sort of just to the north of our area that you can see there. And also, in, in about making it an active space connected. It didn't read like a comp plan that wanted general highway commercial. It, it read like, you know, we want to see this sort of be a new urbanism, walkable environment. And so in this map, you'll see sort of that light yellow is what we have existing as sidewalk or pedestrian path. The dark orange is what is either in our pedestrian plan or what is basically approved to be constructed with the soundside boardwalk. And then the sort of neon green is just, you know, some proposed connections. A lot of those came from the two thousand fourteen sort of Parks and Rec boardwalk, some schematic sketches, as well as the beach road design plan that was done, I think in two thousand ten. Some facilitation of movement between sort of our Whalebone Activity Node and our soundside activity node. So we had a discussion, in your staff report, I sort of outlined some of the key points that I heard. Number one would be to support existing businesses by allowing flexibility and expansion of uses. Number two would be to support the current mix of uses by removing some of the C two uses from the Chord that are threats. Three would be to continue to manage heights and development to keep the sound visible and accessible. And number four, this sort of, has, has a lot of sort of sub-points, but the area has this potential to be sort of our second major activity area and counterweight for seasonal tourists besides just going to the beach. And, you know, in, in your staff report, I've sort of outlined some action items. Number one, support existing businesses by allowing flexibility of, and expansion of uses. I think that, I copied that over. But what we would need to do would be to amend the Chord, to add these new accessory uses to existing, to the existing overlay and mix these options. Basically that yellow and green highlighted in the table and in, in the Chord Report. And then, number two, we would want to consider a new commercial zone for the Chord area, depending on, you know, what sort of that downzoning bill that, that's there. Potentially, we would, we would want to remove some C two uses that are currently there. And then, I copied that over on accident, so I apologize. Number three would be to, you know, again, sort of manage those heights and, and to basically continue to look at development and consider what's being proposed. And then potentially, there, there was a, there was a past document that we looked at, like the massing and, and sort of size of development. I, I don't, we didn't propose any recommendations in the Chord Report to reduce sort of size or height, but we had previously talked about removing the hotel overlay district. Currently, the hotel overlay district kind of coincides with the, the Chord. And so if we could eventually remove that hotel overlay district, we could reduce sizes under sixty feet, which is allowable under that. And then, under that sort of fourth branch of the area having the potential to be the second major activity area, some things we could do there would be to basically develop a wayfinding action plan to implement sort of the wayfinding aspects of, of what was discussed at our last meeting, kiosks, pavement signage, maps, signage for motorists and a website. And then, sort of that discussion around, we want it to feel like a place. It's not sort of a place right now, how do we do that? One of the things we could do, we talked about installing public art. We could have that conversation with the Arts and Culture Committee, look at the area, potentially have some recommendations to, to do some things such as the crosswalk that we've seen and potentially other installations there. And then improvement of infrastructure. For that, I think, you know, we continue to implement our pedestrian plan. When we update the pedestrian plan, we kind of keep the Chord area in mind and the connectivity that's recommended in the Comprehensive Plan between the Whalebone area and that soundside activity node. As David pointed out, we have to consider the reality of sort of golf carts and e-pikes and all these sort of other vehicles and, and at least understand that they're there and have either signage telling them where to be or, or some sort of infrastructure potentially. And then, continue to make the area safer, to David's point at the last discussion, whether that's sort of flashing light, you know, traffic light ahead signage, some simple sort of signs and, and things that can sort of alert motorists that this is not just a highway area, this is, you're coming up on a pedestrian activity zone. And, and as well as continue to look at crosswalks. And then, the US one fifty-eight Access Management Plan hasn't moved on the STIP, the improvement plan that sort of guides transportation funding in our area. It's sort of still on the back half of that, so design hasn't been funded. So we're at least, you know, six or seven years away theoretically from that being funded and constructed. But continue to advocate that, and tell NCDOT and through the STIP that we do want that project and it would be good for us. So I'm happy to sort of field the discussion or if you guys review the staff report and you look at the action items and you look at the discussion points, if there's any sort of issues with what I've put down. I hope, hopefully I've represented our discussion properly and hopefully the action items. You know, maybe there's some that you all think are feasible to pursue. Others, we are limited by current legislation in pursuing like removing uses, unless we get everybody's signature that that's something that they want, but that seems probably unrealistic.
The only comment I have, Joe, is when we were looking at these action items, I, I was reading to myself, okay, item number four, that's not an action item, that's just a statement. But then you went through and listed all these possible things to review, develop, consider. So before this goes to the Board of Commissioners, or I would maybe reword that a little bit, you know, consider items to help ensure this area becomes a, whatever it is, the second major activity.
Yeah, I apologize, I, somehow I copied the same slide over. I had a really good action item slide.
We're laughing with you, we've all been.
So I, I do apologize and I, I hear you.
Um, I don't think we're on the verge of sending it anywhere anyway, right? It's still just discuss, but it's a good point, you know. So I'm wondering, given the legislative restrictions right now, if we should maybe prioritize some things that aren't hinging on that so much and try to focus on those, things that we could flesh out a little bit that don't rely on that particular situation with the downzoning?
I think that makes sense, yeah.
Would it be helpful to prioritize, in other words?
Yes.
Based on things that we can actually accomplish or hope to accomplish sooner, you know, without waiting?
Right.
And then I guess my only other question would be, you know, do we want some public input somewhere along the way and if so, when? This is a huge, I think it's great.
Yeah.
And I've had positive feedback since our last meeting about the discussion. I don't know if anybody else has, but I think it's really important. And it's, you know, it's changing down there with the event site and the pickup, everything, you know, with everything changing, I think it's great that we should be proactive and look at it. But I'm just wondering if and when we should have some more public engagement?
I think that's.
Yeah, I would agree.
I, I totally agree.
Because I think with public engagement, you will get some more good ideas. And you'll also see what their, their priorities are.
I don't wanna, you know, try to shirk our duties or anything, but.
I think tempo would be valuable.
And I don't know whether that's best done, like with a committee? Or does staff have any ideas on this or?
I mean, I, I think if, Kelly, you wanna go ahead?
No, no.
You know, yeah, I think if the Planning Board was supportive of, I guess, more specific action items or, or what I have here, we could kind of circle the ones that we think, you know, are, are, we could move forward with, given the existing paradigm of sort of not downzoning. That would be the next step. And then I would, you know, I think go and, and sort of do, we could just have public meetings in here or in, in the local neighborhood, like the Lakeside neighborhood and.
Especially people that already have an interest down there, business owners and.
Yeah, I would be willing to come back and sit in like we did before without.
Do you think it's too, what do you think about that, Kelly?
You can get either way.
Huh?
Can go either way.
I know, but I just. No, I'm, I'm just throwing it out there, I'm, I'm not sure if it's too soon or, but if you wait.
I feel like, so I think the only thing that I would want public comment on and to make publicly available out there for conversation are things that we can do right now.
Right.
I wouldn't want to talk about any potential type of new commercial district that restricted
No.
car washes or automobile repair and mail bond.
Right.
It's not something that we can do right now. And so I wouldn't want that to get out into the public and it grow legs and it's not even something that we're capable of doing.
Right.
So I think any type of public engagement should just be around the things that we know we can do.
Right.
I think we would need to clearly define what we are looking for public comment on.
Right.
And this, excuse me, this slide is a key slide, I think, in the area in which we are looking for public comment.
Right.
And different aspects of what activities, attractions, infrastructure, whatever, that people would like to see in this general area. Certainly not the things that regard downzoning and what's allowed and what's not allowed business-wise.
In addition, you know, Joe did mention something in there about adding uses. That's obviously something that can be discussed because that provides more flexibility. You know, one thing we talked about was right now, you can't have, if you have a, like a restaurant associated with outdoor rec, that restaurant has to be accessory.
Right.
But it would actually be, you know, upzoning and provide more flexibility if you could have a principal restaurant and a principal commercial rec and not, one not having to be accessory to the other. So that's in addition, that's an upzoning, that's something that I don't think would be affected by the legislation and Joe dealt into that at their last meeting, so that could be something to think about.
Right.
I think the key here is, is, would be to frame the questions towards what can be done and, and prioritize that and plus, give them a sense of direction of what we're looking for and then, then request additional input from them of ideas that you haven't already thought of and prioritized. But you need to guide them in terms of, in the questioning, what, what we're actually looking for. And, and I think that would be, provide us a lot of good information to consider.
I think people would be excited to think that, that it has potential to be planned instead of random.
Right.
You know, and I think townspeople would like to engage with that a little bit, you know?
Right.
Maybe that list is something that we can bring back to you next month and we can work together to prioritize.
I think so, I think prioritizing, it's, I keep hearing that same word.
Well, before we do.
Go ahead.
Before we do that, can we just set aside in a different list the things we know we can't do? So we don't even.
Well, that'll happen automatically, yeah.
Even talk about them as a priority.
Right, I mean, they probably will come up along the way, but, right.
So, I guess one, you know, the Strategic Plan item was sort of to look at how the uses, examine the allowable uses within the Commercial Outdoor Recreation District. And, and so, you know, I think that original sort of direction from the Board runs counter a little bit to, to that because I think as we went through this process, we found that, well, a lot of what we want to do to really align what our Comprehensive Plan and our, our zoning ordinance is implementing, i- isn't necessarily aligned. But we can't remove some of the things. So we can potentially incentivize development we want though by adding in uses or making it easier to do some of these other uses. And then there's sort of this other side of things with like the, sort of the infrastructure, the wayfinding. Those are town actions that we can do sort of as a part of this. But potentially, it's a little bit outside of that original direction from, from the Board. So I think, you know, but in, in looking at it, I think it, it would, um, these are things we can do since we can't remove these uses right now to strengthen the district and sort of accomplish the Comprehensive Plan goals in another way. So I just wanna, I guess, put that out there.
Yeah, no, and I think it would maybe create some interest and excitement about the area if we started to work on some of those other infrastructure items, if you would, so people could picture what it might be like, you know? And then somewhere along the way, before too long, I think it would be good to involve arts and culture, especially if we're gonna talk about public art and those kinds of things, you know, they're, that's their thing. So, so we're gonna prioritize, right? Basically, and then talk about it again next month.
Sounds good.
Do you have a question?
I would like to comment on this, again, this slide in particular, particularly the bright green proposed boardwalk and trails. And I think I made a comment about it last month because there had been a big article in Southern Living Magazine about the town of Duck and the boardwalk and this and that. Well, the new Southern Living came this week and there is another ten-page feature article about boardwalks along the water in towns in the state of North Carolina. They had Carolina Beach, they had Duck, they had Columbia. It is a, people love this, people flock to attractions like this. So it's, it's definitely something that, it would serve its purpose. It would draw people away from the ocean when they don't want to be on the beach or go to the ocean. It would give them an alternative, of something to do and see. Sunset activities could be created around it. It's a great, great.
Yeah, build that and then like, just, yeah.
Right.
All this stuff would be easy to take care of, to make it like a center, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, I have a quick question. On this map, there's a proposed sidewalk down Lakeside Street? That's the first I've ever seen of that.
Yeah, that's, well, that's a planned sidewalk, that's in our pedestrian plan. I basically took the list that was in our pedestrian plan and just mapped these.
Okay, I've just never seen that before.
It's at the back end of it.
Okay, good.
It's so, I mean, it's towards the end, but yeah, it's.
Okay.
It's planned to, to be constructed at some point.
There's not much space for that, is there?
Well, just with the hotel, like in all the, trying to keep the hotel guests out of our residential neighborhood, we really would not want that sidewalk. I'm pretty sure I could speak for my neighborhood on that. But yeah, but I know it's, it's down the list, so.
Yeah.
Yeah, just, I've never seen it before, so I was curious.
Yeah, it's in our pedestrian plan currently.
Not in our CIP?
No, it's not in our CIP.
It's not even what, I'm sorry?
Sort of on the back end of that list of our pedestrian plan. So I wanted to really understand, so this is what, the infrastructure we have, this is what we're planning to build at some point or privately is being planned, the sound walk. is what we're planning to build at some point, or privately is being planned, the soundwalk, Soundside Boardwalk. And then green really, you know, that came from our Parks and Rec plan, is, is where that boardwalk extension, you know, sort of, at least that I've found is like our, sort of, that concept came, came to be. And then, you know, the beach road design plan considered sort of more conceptual sort of circulation between the Whalebone and Soundside. But they had, you know, multiple planned traffic lights along US 158 and multiple more sidewalk connections. So this is, you know, just sort of, again, that's, put a line on the map and then it's like, that's the, you know, that's the thing. But I think just generally that concept of having some circulation between the Whalebone Activity Area, you could park there and easily flow into the outlets and up to the activity center, however that is best achieved, I think, would be a huge benefit.
Okay. Anybody else? Questions, comments?
Looks really good. I like what you've put together.
Yeah, thank you, Joe, it's great. Kelly, do you have anything on your report that hasn't been covered somewhere else?
Probably not. We talked about the DWMP and Estrein Shoreline Management Plan, we're just moving along with that. They were actually out there, Joe was out there a couple days ago with some folks with a drone, trying to get images to determine where the SAV, subaquatic vegetation is, because that's really going to be telling as to what type of measure is even going to be allowable for this Estrein Shoreline Management Plan. Sand relocation, doing cost share. Sand relocation is over, so they shouldn't be doing any more work on the beach, but you can still apply for the Dune Cost Share, and that will be available through like June 16th or towards the end of June, I believe, so. Planning Department did a great job with their third quarter permit turnaround, so big kudos to everybody in the department for that. And just everything's picking up with Dowdy Park, summer season events, obviously fitness. They had yoga this morning. Things will start picking up as we go. That's really all I have.
Great. Questions, comments on Planning Director's Report? Okay, do any members have anything on their agenda today? And I have nothing on my agenda today, so I will entertain a motion to adjourn. Sure.
If you're not busy or dead.
Oh.
We're having a dinner now at Public Services today.
That's right.
So you're welcome to come up there to your facility. There's live questions.
Okay.
It's happening now, you mean?
It's happening now.
Okay, now.
Shouldn't you all be there?
They scheduled it simultaneously.
That's why they're here.
They were like, let's do it during the planning board meeting so that they won't be able to make it, but look, we're, we're done in record time. Okay, great. It's going to be funny to go up there without a trunk full of brush or whatever, right?
Stop by my house.
Okay, thank you, we will. I will.
I will.
Okay. Anybody then? Do I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Okay, great, we are adjourned then. Done. Thank you, everybody. I think this is a record.